1:30 in the regular meeting of the City Planning and Zoning Board Thursday, November 7th, and in the council chambers of City Hall. Preliminary matters, Mr. McGary?
We have no additions.
Does the board have any agenda additions or deletions?
No.
Seeing none, we will move forward. Dawn Crado is not going to be with us today. He has an excused absence. And Honey is trying to get away with a few extra excused absences in the future. We will worry about that later. Right, Ms. Manous?
Thank you.
A public comment, seeing nobody in the public for comment this afternoon, we will pass on that. It's opened and it's closed. Approval of last meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or changes to those?
No, I didn't see anything.
I didn't either. And therefore, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
It's still moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. A good portion of today's meeting will be talking about our schedule going forward in the year. And Tim, I believe, would like to have so much input on that. And I think it behooves us to try to follow the input of our planning and zoning director as to what the priorities are. I mean, if we have something you really feel is more important, I understand it's fair to bring it up. But in general, I hope we can agree that his agenda has more specific reasons for it than ours, not just because we have one particular item we'd like to see done or not. So, Tim, with that, I'm going to like to turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I did is, if you all recall, we gave out in our June memorandum, we had the priorities, and they were by, I think, starting with every six months, a year, up to two years. And what I did is try to revise that based on the point of time that we are now, since it's been about six months later. And I've identified those things that we've already completed, and I have done that. One of the things that we're still have, we've been waiting for the original town neighborhood to come back to us, that, "Mr. Chairman, I have sent email. I have not gotten a response from them. I don't know, would you want me to send a letter out? And if we don't really hear anything," you know, I hate to keep this so we can move forward on it. I mean, we wanted to have some response from them, but I have not heard anything.
Let me, I think we should just open that for a quick discussion with the board members. They've come forward and asked for our help in changing some of the, I guess it's rules and regulations of their community, they're part of their community, and we've said yes to them, and yet whenever we put them on the agenda or look for them, they don't seem to respond to us. And I have one other comment, that I own property in this particular area, and I've never heard of the organization, they've never come to my property there to let me know that it exists, so I'm not sure how representative this group is to the entire neighborhood. And I can be glad to change that, but therefore, I just don't like to...
I've worked with this community in the past, many years ago, I can't say that, many years ago, and they are substantial in number. I know that. I know their leadership. They have been here in the recent past to talk to us. I'm going to suggest that perhaps they were, you know, preoccupied with the election matters recently, and having, you know, a good reception, you know, for the changes that they wanted. I think maybe just another effort to get in touch with them. Is that in order, Tim?
Well, I suggest, how about I do a formal letter, if that's all right, or...
In light of your previous efforts, would it be feasible to put some sort of a deadline on a response?
Yeah, I think I need to put a deadline on it. If not, we need to move forward with this.
Sure.
And, you know, I think we were trying to give ample opportunity. My understanding, one reason we were held up is, Mr. Lauffer brought up the issue, do they really represent the community? And that's always the problem when you have some people, you know? But the way I've got the comp plan thing, the whole idea of going through this process is find out how much support there is to do certain things in that community without just doing things. So, how about I do a letter, give them a timeframe to respond. If not, then I think we'll say that we will move forward.
Let them reply to us then, if afterwards they miss the deadline.
It's obviously tabled if you don't get any response.
You want us to ta, I mean, I...
Let's give, I suggest we give them this last opportunity, Tim, and then we'll table it at our next meeting if they fail to respond to it by the time...
Okay, well, why don't I just tell them, "Look, we're not going to move forward on this until, if you're not, if you don't respond by this, we're going to table this item."
There's no response at all to your letter? There's no response at all?
No, I haven't got any response. I've left a phone message, I've done email, and so...
But I, and the thing that's surprising is receptive to their requests, and it's...
It should be the other way around.
It should be, yeah. It's not adversarial in any way, and therefore, we'd like to accommodate them, but just keeping something on the agenda and creating paperwork on it doesn't seem to move anything.
Well, yeah, I think part of what we wanted to do is to accommodate them, like, such as have the meeting at a convenient time that the worker, you know, workpeople could be there and all that, rather than our 1:30 in the afternoon. But we wanted to get a go-ahead from them to do that, and we just haven't. So, I will, I will do a letter saying that that's the will, you know, at our meeting, what transpired, and give them a timeframe, and if you don't respond, we're going to table this item, and we can't move forward on it.
We all agree then, is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, I've not shared, I don't think I've shared with you the draft at all. I mean...
I think I saw it, Tim.
You did see it, okay.
I think so.
I mean, concern I'd have, I mean, we're letting the one organization dictate the whole thing, but if we don't have the neighborhood really involved in this, I'm a little concerned just moving forward on these. And that's, everything in the comp plan, and I'll get on my soapbox for two minutes, give me a chance here, is that, you know, I can sit back and have my martini and write something, but that's no good when you don't have the input of the community and the buy-in of the community and bringing in things you don't know about. And that's what bothers me, you know, I've got something which is not bad, but probably could, we need to see with the property owners, the residents, and how they, you know, what their issues are and how they think should be. So, let's do it that way, and hopefully we'll get a response out of it. Okay?
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, the land use definitions, I think we really need to do that. I'm going to move forward in the first half of 2014 to do that, so I've changed it a little. And we've, I've modified the schedule a little, just because, as I said, we're going through transition my office where I'm having to handle things that normally I could delegate, and, you know, it's a little hard to get a continuous move forward without these interruptions on it. So, until I get more familiar with that, you know, I could probably do better, but we'll just have to, but I think I can do this. The septic tanks, that issue's generally off the table right now until the council, till they make further decision how they want to proceed on that, and if they decide they want to go on regulations, or however they want to proceed. Part of it may be getting more documentation and data before they proceed on this. I mean, you're all aware of the coordinated effort that's around the lagoon, so...
Why, I have a question. Why do we have to wait for them? Can't we put forth something?
Well, we could put forth something, but I, this was driven by the council and a policy. I don't like to get too far out on that, because there is a lot more going on that I'm not necessarily involved in, and you wouldn't, okay? That's all. I mean, we could do something, but this whole thing with these septic tanks is a sensitive political issue, and I think they, you know, they, we need direction from them before we move forward.
I think our assigned role is to, is to move on their directives as opposed to us sending them directives. We can ask questions of them, or we can ask them to respond, but we can do that as a citizen also.
Okay.
So, I don't, I, as a board, I don't think we want to start implementing things.
Now, if the city manager wants us or the staff to do it, you would see me here. I would explain to you as being driven by, you know, the administration, so you know that, so you could up or down on however you want to do it. But right now, we're waiting on some direction from council. All right. Osceola Park, we're going to work on that. Hopefully, we'll get a better response out of Osceola Park than I have out of Original Town.
Now, isn't it true, though, that Osceola Park suggested it was going to be a while, and they weren't pushing us at this point?
No, they weren't pushing us.
They're more...
And their issues are not the same. I think, I think on Osceola Park, they don't quite have the same land use issues that they do with all these churches and these other land that have kind of gobbled up in the original town neighborhood. Osceola Park's in a different situation. So, they, they've been happy. I've not been getting any calls on that, and we need to work on the, still need to work on the draft on that, so I've been held up. The capital improvement schedule, after reviewing the Florida statutes again, I talked to the county, we're supposed to do this annually, but if, if you've looked at the comp plan, that annual update on the capital improvements element, you have to do all the facilities that are handled by concurrence. It's a lot of data work, and every year you would be changing the numbers in it. So, I felt that this year, the simplest thing, because of the way the Florida statutes read, that all we're required to do is review the element, but adopt an annual capital improvement schedule by ordinance. It doesn't amend the comp plan, meaning, it does amend the comp plan, but you don't go through the long process that the state has, it's sent up to the different agencies and all that. So, I've already prepared a draft of the capital improvements that, based on our adopted budget. So, there's not a lot to say about that. Plus, we include the Indian River Metropolitan Transportation Planning Organization and the Indian River County projects, road projects that affect us, and the school district. That's all we're required to do. It's a simple package, everything is, it's really not a lot to, to think about, but it would, it would meet the requirements of the statutes. There is no penalty if we don't do it, but you never know what will happen in Tallahassee. I want to be sure that when I first got here, they were not doing that, and it really, we couldn't do any plan amendments, and I had to spend a lot of time getting, it's not only in compliance with that, but also doing a capital element, so...
It appears to be a big item, and it's not really...
It's not really a big item. It would have been, from a standpoint of staff, time to do the improvements element, but what I would like to do is work with Cindy Lawson, our finance director, and maybe scale down what we have in there, because the Florida statutes have changed. We don't have to show feasibility anymore, and we need to tailor so it's easier to amend every year, and I don't have to go through a lot of data work, which I, which I've done, so... And I should have that before you. I'm going to go through you for recommendation to the city council. But as I said, it's almost, all these things have been done. The capital improvements projects have already been approved, so you're going to just see those projects that affect concurrency. And we don't really have any concurrency issues in the city, so it's, it's more of maintaining and that kind of thing. Okay? And the downtown element, where we still believe we can complete it probably in the later half of 2014, but again, this is one of the ones I need, the staff needs to work closely with Main Street and other property owners in the downtown, and that's what makes these, you just can't sit back and write these. You need to work with them, so...
Are they receptive to being participatory in this particular...
Well, to be honest with you, they've had changes over there. We really haven't had enough contact to go over these kind of things with them, which I'd like to do. I haven't done the groundwork on them, I just...
Does this deserve to be any higher in origin than where it is right now, Tim? You're using, are they pushing for this, or...
No, no, this is, I'm setting this thing.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, I've kind of scaled back a little what I'm trying to do. I still want to do the comp plan that we're required to, we need to update, and so I'm trying to do my best to get some of these things out of the way so we can move forward on the comp plan.
Let me ask you then, Tim, will there be any controversial issues in this, or do you think it's a non-controversial?
Well, I think one of the things we talked about, I still think as a staff person, we need to keep pushing some of the changes, the twin pairs needs to be in the comp plan as a directive.
In what way?
In that, the city wants to, you know, further the twin pairs, with the understanding we can always put provisors, you need to have the financial resource, we can put a lot of things in there.
Okay.
I mean, I've always been of the opinion that all, some of that could be also doing an improvements project, meaning we would do a special taxing to pay for some of this. We never got that far, but it's a city council policy, but I think part of what your job is when we make, is, you make these recommendations, and they can always leave these out. That's the nice thing about comp plans, a lot of the, you're not just reacting to stuff, you're proposing things that people, we can iron out in a policy for format than rather that it's some public hearing where we're going, you know, that a lot of these things haven't been answered. Okay? Well, let's see. And the land development areas for the wetlands, we're going to do that. I really want to get that done, as I, I think I explained to you, we need to tie that into the lagoon protection. I think that's, that would be good. Certainly has been needed. We have it in the comp plan, we just haven't got around to it.
May I ask, on that particular one, Tim, also, is there some format already in the county that we're going to pick up and follow, or is there state regulations we'll be picking up?
Yeah, I've got, the county has certain things. I've already got a couple examples of...
So, we'll dovetail into their understanding of this?
Oh, yes. We're going to follow some of what the county has on that. A lot of our, for instance, the aquifer recharge protection areas, most of it's under our control up at the airport, but we do have some further down that's already developed. There's not a lot you can do, you know, the idea to protect those is one. You don't want to have ground polluting type activities above it, and you also don't want to have a lot of impervious surface, so you get it, the water can get down there. So, I'm going to have to, that's the only area that's a little more problematic, but...
How will this affect the more urbanized areas of the city?
Well, it will affect that, because I, we need to put in requirements to make sure that we have like street, buffer filter strips where we're along the shoreline, so we have homes. Right now, we have a lot of people, they just build, put concrete down, and that just goes right into the lagoon. It's a retroactive thing, but we need to start getting those things in place, so when people do certain things that would trigger that, they'd be required to come in to do that. And new development, obviously, would be automatically, so...
Has there been any consideration at all to redirecting the storm water flow to keep it out of the lagoon?
Well, you got, it's got to go somewhere.
Right.
Okay, we have requirements of how much retention, have, what we're working on are these baffles and that, that basically take the particulates out, they're maintain, so that's helping it. And we have a long-term, multi-year process to get, I think there's 60 storm outfalls that we have, that they're slowly doing work on that to do that.
I'm just thinking about the nutrient load.
But you've got to have, the water's got to go somewhere, you can't just retain it on site.
But let me ask you this, when you say the particulates, are you talking about trash and thinking about solids versus nutrient...
Well, no, I'm talking about anything, a lot of, this would...
Versus nutrients, leaves and...
This, you have a lot of the, like, the nutrient phosphorus, it's all attached, it's a lot of this. This takes out that, and that's the major problem, is the nutrients getting, one of the major problems getting into the...
But even some of the, you say there's a tin can or something placed on the street, it'll eventually, it will go straight, there's nothing to baffle that out or collect that, isn't there?
It would be collected out of this, yeah.
Like the sediment, but the plastic bags and things could still go into the river right now, the way it's...
Well, I don't know how, generally, we'll be caught in this. I can't, I'm not an expert on this, and I haven't looked at it.
But that takes care of the hard surfaces, the impervious surface, but what, can we get into the residential side of all this?
Well, the residential side, the problem is, all the newer residential has to meet, you know, require that. The problem is, we have a lot of older residential neighborhoods that their storm drainage is basically into the street, you know, we don't have that, other than these outfalls that they're doing some retroactive work on it. I mean, we could speed this up by going, you know, you do stormwater drainage districts, which help finance some of this.
That's a way to go.
I mean, I, I wasn't prepared to talk, but I mean, certainly, that is the way that the Public Works Department is trying to address this. I mean, it's required through the MPDS permit that we have, and our comp plan requires water quality standards to be met. And our problem is, it isn't new development, most of it is retroactive, and you're, what you have to do is come in there and retrofit stuff to do that. So, basically, once all the stormwater outfalls are done, at least that goes into our storm drainage system, there'll be much hot, much higher level of water quality coming out. I mean, it'll take care of a lot of those pollutants. I mean, it's not a, and hopefully, these other things we do with the filter strips and all that will reduce some of that direct runoff. I mean, we do require that, but it, we don't, we don't allow direct runoff right now into the river, but this would help on that kind of thing, too.
Because we're, our awareness is heightened because of the stress on our lagoon, myself and I believe the community is telling us, let's do what we can to move this forward. But what I don't have is the talent to know what we can do, if that's going to have to be to Public Works Department or something, because most of what's on private land, we can't direct them, we can ask them, or we can encourage them to do certain things by stopping the water, but we can't force them into it, is that correct?
Well, what we do, right, what we do is like on the stormwater drainage, like the stormwater, everybody, there's a certain, we elevated our requirements on that for almost all the property. Almost everything now, under a certain, over a certain threshold, has to meet these higher standards. In fact, our standards, St. John's has a standard that they require when you have so many, but we've now established that standard for even smaller projects that have to be met. So, when you have projects that come in, we have certain thresholds. If you recall, when we were doing the stormwater management, if you add so much impervious surface, your trigger's a higher level that has to come in. If you don't, you know, you don't have to meet it. So, we do that as they come in. Again, it's retrofitting, where they do a substantial improvements, or they add impervious surface, then you're required to come up to the new standard, onsite standard.
So, it's both quality and retention, both?
They both take into account. And that's the intent. Any retention onsite is intended to hold it up, and that helps water quality. And then you, anything beyond that that gets into the drainage system, then these baffles and are, are supposed to take care of some of that. But it's not a perfect system at all.
Well, the newest subdivision we have, which is out, we're on Club Drive right now, I saw how that was done, and it was what I believe was going to be done, and I walked it just out of my own curiosity, nobody threw me off, so... But there's a lot of low areas in there where there's like a two-foot, where it's dry retention, and even after the heavier rain we had, and it was a while back now, because we haven't, but it was, but it did, it seemed like it's working, nothing came out of the street that I, and I didn't look at how it affected the allers.
You're talking about the live, live oak lane?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have swales system that goes into there, and even, yeah, even that has to, any of the retention, all that have to be maintained. That's always a problem with these. We do code enforcement when we, when we have a problem where they're not maintaining this, but something like that, that was the concern the staff had, that those swale areas have to be maintained. You can't be, you know, they start filling up after a while, you need to take care of them, so it's, it's a continuing...
And over time, you'll pick up a couple inches of silt in there, your grass will go through it, but it won't retain as much water as it did at one time. But that's true of any pond also, and any retention.
Exactly, that's exactly right.
And usually, that's designed in, I mean, it's figured into the criteria when they do that, you live for 30 or 40 years.
That's correct. But as I said, we do, we do code enforcement at times after where you, we have a breakdown in the storm, you know, the flow's going the wrong way, or that our, a real problem is some of these older projects that, they didn't really get into that, and we have water coming off. We have to figure out how we can ask them politely to do something, and we, we work around it, though.
I think we need incentives. I think we need incentives rather than regulations.
Okay.
Especially on the private side.
I would, I'm usually not in favor of that, but I would be in this case, I think.
Well...
And I would like to see us, if, if we can deal with this any sooner, Tim, this would be my priority to move up, if, if it's practical.
Well, one of the things, remember when we did the plan development, we put incentive, they have an incentive in there if they're willing to go to a higher standard to get something. So, for incentives, we need to have something that would, an incentive that's enough. So, yeah, I'd be willing to discuss that. In fact, we could look at that as part of this effort, where people are willing to do more, we could maybe, you know, work, work that in. You know, I think that's great. I like, I like the incentive approach.
Is council giving this specific, is this on immediate agenda, or is this something...
No, but I believe when I brought it up to the council, they were very supportive, because they know it's just one of the elements that fit into the whole lagoon, you know, improvement program. It's just one of many things that have to be done. Okay?
So, at this point in time, we didn't really move it, you're considering it as a...
Well, I'm going to start work on it, as I said.
Okay.
I think that's probably, that's certainly more important probably than the comp plan for the downtown right now.
My point, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, okay, well, I can...
Does everybody agree with us on that? I mean, there's a consensus, isn't there?
Little rain period, yeah. We've got a little tide, it's ours.
All right, I have it marked, IAH, that stands for important as hell.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Joe.
Okay, the, the lower priority items are, when I say lower priority, it's when we're going to schedule them, it's not, okay? So, the amendments to the, to the mixed-use, commercial, industrial, future land use categories, put that off into next year, or, well, 2014, July. And the LDRs to, they would follow up. When we do the comp plan amendments, we do land development regulations to follow up. The last one's the sign regulations. We'd like to get going on that this summer, just because Peggy and I did, we got, we did all that work on the temporary signs, and we really need to get, finish off what we did to get that sign ordinance up. For instance, one of the things in there, we have no sign regulations for the POI district. So, the staff, staff had been just assuming it's a commercial. Those are the little things you find after you, you know, so we just need to clean it up. Or wall signs, if you read the facade signs, it says it's a certain formula you have, well, really, the staff has just given them 10%. So, you know, the things that just need to be cleaned up in that. Plus, some other things we may want to do in there after we talk about it. I really, we need to look at digital signs and any of those, too, where, okay?
Is, is this going to be as long and drawn out as we did, had before?
I hope not.
And it's volatile, it was volatile.
Oh, well, I know.
We went through this whole thing, everybody was on board, and all of a sudden, we got a new player in, and it was all off the table. I mean, that's frustrating at its best.
Well, hopefully, it will not be, because I don't see us doing a significant change in some of the signs. I mean, I think we need to wordsmith it better. In some areas, we may want to do like an overlay district, where we get into, for instance, Peachland Road's a good poster child. Most of the businesses that gone in there have put in these nice monument signs at Lowry, but there, we've had others that come in with signs that are out of scale to those. So, where we want to have, or the overlay district, we didn't deal with the signs there. You want to have the signs all fit together, and where you have a pedestrian or a district that has a certain look to it, you want to, you're going to have to regulate somewhat, because clearly, the business set the tone, but not all businesses follow that tone. Yeah. So, I think that's something we could look at while we do that. And the other thing is the downtown, I'd be honest with you, I am, I do not personally think the, the sandwich board signs on the sidewalks are attractive for our downtown. I've told that to the Main Street, but I'd need to, you know, it's not something I'm going to unilaterally, we allow it, but I don't think those kind of signs were intended to be attracting trips off the highway. They were really intended, when somebody came up with that, was for pedestrian traffic that walk around, you see a sandwich board sign, not the car doing 45 miles an hour through the downtown. So, they've gotten to be a, I think they did track from the downtown, but that's not, that's for my personal observation.
Is it critical to survival? Some, in some cases, that may be bringing more traffic and other things. When they're paying people to stand out front and hold a sign, you know it must be important to them.
Well, no, we allow them to hold a sign, you know, you can do that, you just cannot...
But that's expensive.
You can't move the sign back and forth. Now, we, we will do code, so, oh, yeah, so, we allow them to hold a sign.
But they can't move it.
No.
You can't flip it and...
No, you can't flip, no flipping and all that.
All right.
They know that, too. You'll see them out there. They'll, it'll be just across streets in the county, they're flipping signs.
It's quite entertaining.
And in Los Angeles, I hear their anatomical robots are doing that.
Look like people.
White armor.[1638.15]
Totally.
In Los Angeles.
So, you have to understand, it's something we have to deal with, you know, down in the future. Okay.
Halloween.
I don't want to go on that one too far.
So, this is what I, my suggestions, I'll write this up, if, unless you have some other changes you would like to just kind of fit.
You missed the tree protection ordinance.
We did that. Oh, did I?
You did.
Where's that?
No, it's up there, amendments to tree ordinance. I have that, number three.
Yeah, we're all done with that.
Yeah.
We think it's completed, isn't it?
I hope so.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Don't we know?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we're done, we're already implementing.
Okay.
Bless it.
Okay. We all, all right. So, I'll bring, I'll have that back for you, written up.
Okay.
And let's see, where are we now?
Next item, should annual report?
We put a copy of our annual report in there. My suggestion is as-
Last year.
Pardon?
Last year's copy, yeah.
Yes.
Copy of last.
My suggestion is that if you don't mind, that the chairman and I would put together a draft for your review and approval. If you have some specific things you want us to include ahead of time, it'd be nice, but certainly, once you get the draft, you can put, be, you know, make any other changes you feel are, that would be desirable to that. But that's how we've done it the last two years, and it's worked fairly well.
Yeah.
Everybody all right with that?
Sure. I went through the list of items that we had all year long, and it's easy enough to put together.
Yeah, I think we've, you've all done quite a bit of work this year.
When you look back-
Yeah, it was good work.
We did some, yeah, we got some things accomplished, I thought.
Right. No, I think so, too. I mean, some hard items and-
The speed wasn't necessarily the result of the committee's delay, it was results of possibly others.
That's true.
That's for the committee's benefit.
So, we'll come back with that. And what I'll do, Mr. Chairman, how about I give you a draft, you take a look at it, and then you send it back to me? Is that okay for you?
Just give me a call, well, I have-
Oh, however you want to do it.
Okay, I can come in someday, and you and I can just sit down.
Okay, I just don't, you know, if it's-
I think you're in my, what we did this year, I think I pretty well, and you do, and it's the matter of highlighting and picking most-
Okay. If you'd like, if that's fine, I'd love to see you, so that'd be fine.
Or eat, now, I may, we'll talk on the phone.
Okay.
He might even buy you a lunch. That'll never happen. That'll never happen.
Oh, okay. The next matter is, as you probably are aware now, every time, every now and then, an issue comes up that I feel, I try to address as the planning director, but at times, I can't address them.
Let's identify for our audience that may be on television, this is a discussion of possible revision to the criteria for revising lot lines in subdivisions.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay.
Because they don't have this.
Well, that's true. I was going to, that's fine. These issues come up, and basically, we went through a subdivision regulations last year, remember, we made some changes to it. We incorporated changes, or kept the same changes we had previously, had to do with the division of existing lots. And the whole intent was, we have regulations in there that require that where you have in a subdivision where you're going to subdivide already existing lots, that those lots had to be, meet the average lot size and width of lots in the same subdivision, same zoning. The intent is to keep the community character, because you have an established pattern, and it's done very well. We haven't had, we've had a couple denials when people have tried to come in to do that, but, I mean, I don't think that has been the issue. The issue that came up before me was a property owner has two lots side by side, wants to move the property line five feet. Well, the way we wrote the ordinance is that we include both creating new lots and re-subdivision, meaning we're changing the lot lines. There's no way, and I spell it out in my report, how she can do it. And I really think that's probably an unforeseen circumstance of this.
Could you draw a catch 20?
You're not exactly right. And, you know, as we always say on these things, we find a mistake or a problem in ordinance, I'm going to bring it back to you, even though I may have been responsible for it, I will bring it back to you.
Tim, how long ago was that ordinance done, then, that we're looking to revise?
Oh, it was back, I thought it was last year, we did, earlier this year, I forgot exactly.
It's something that we did.
Yes, it's something you did, but it was, there was so much in that ordinance-
Yeah.
-to remember all this stuff. We did some fine tuning on this, but this has been in place on the, the size of the subdivided lots for at least four years. We had something back in 2009 that we-
Okay, that's kind of my reference there.
So, my concern is that I think this is too adversely impacts the property owner to a degree that I don't think that was the intent that we tried to do. The other thing is, I want to get people to actually come in and get their, what happens, they go to the property praiser's office, and they do a meets and bounds, and they split their property, and you don't, we end up with no end of problems sometimes with that. This requires a person, they should be coming in and getting a replat, officially approve the change in their lot line from us, and then we can make sure the zoning and everything else is taken care of. And when people don't do that, it does create some problems. So, I think what I'm suggesting here, and I put some language in there, I think we just eliminate the re-subdivision from that, and allow people to do that. They still have to meet the minimum lot size, they can't make a lot smaller than that. But since they're already existing lots, you're not creating a new lot, you probably wouldn't even notice this in a neighborhood. You would notice it if they're creating an additional lot, that would show up in the neighborhood, and that's why-
The only concern I really have here is the fact that the 300 feet of the lots to be subdivided, and you're going to include in the calculation the original lot, the lot that you're adding or taking the five feet from, and then one additional lot.
Well, no, I wouldn't even, no, if we do, if they're doing what I propose, you wouldn't even look at that. They're automatically exempt from it. You follow me? The only ones that have to meet all those criteria would be, the 300 would be where you're creating a new lot, where you have two lots and you want to make three. She's not doing that. She's moving it five feet over so she can have a little bigger house.
And that I understand.
Yeah.
But will the ordinance, what Honey's alluding to, I think, will the ordinance allow something more than that in the future, because we're not doing it for this individual, we're doing it as a general?
Oh, no, this would allow everybody to do this.
Right, yeah. But the thing is, we're looking at existing planted lots located within 300 feet of the lots to be subdivided or re-divided.
Right. But that's, so they're, these are lots that are nearby, that's an existing character. I mean, the other way we could have done it is along the street.
Well, you know where this all comes back to, remember the arguments we had over McManchins? That's what I'm concerned over, that we're maybe going to invite that kind of controversy again.
Well, no, we have, we got FAR requirements and all that, so that holds it back.
Well, this is to add on to an existing structure.
Yeah, well, she's making, but it's, I mean, to be honest with you, if you looked at what she had here, and I'm, this is, she's got lots that are, that are way bigger in her lot.
Uh-huh.
She's not even, you know, so, she's already got McManchins in her neighborhood. You know, it's, the whole intent is to keep the basic character of the neighborhood, and we're doing that by the lot size. If you give, if you, what would happen is, in these, with these larger lots, somebody will come in and put in smaller lots, and then you do have different sized homes.
And I understand that.
I know. I mean, the McManchins are dealt with through our FAR, good or bad, that's how it's done.
The heights and all, yeah.
Yeah. This is intended so you have a similar look in the neighborhood. So, that's why we go by average lot size and width.
I think the key word in that whole thing is average.
Right.
Average with average area.
Right. And that's why you look at everything with 300, and you figure that out.
How many, how many times has this come forward? Is this an isolated experience?
This is the first time they had somebody on a lot change like this. Now, we've had a couple that wanted to subdivide lots.
Is there a way we can grant a variance instead of-
No, no. Remember, variances can only be on a hardship. I would have gone that route if you could have done it, but, but see, I looked at it this way. This affects everybody. I want people where they're making some of these minor changes, be able to come in and get administrative approval, not have to go through a variance where they really don't have a variance. I mean, that's not her, she didn't create the hardship, she, she's creating the hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah, she wouldn't meet the, and you don't want to approve something that doesn't meet the code.
See, this was an unintended consequence, and now are we going back and opening up, you know, something?
No, I don't believe so, because we, you're not creating new lots.
That would be a big concern.
And that's it. And the other thing is, I wanted to be sure that we were doing this the right way. I mean, who, you know, this is not the thing I could have gone ahead and just signed off, and I wouldn't do that. So, you know, it needs to be all above board and I, and on this kind of situation, so.
Tim, let me ask you the same kind of question I think Honey's asking.
Okay.
I may have just a little different, what we're really allowing, from the way I perceive it, is an individual who owns, has two lots together, individual lots, okay? And they're saying, I'm going to take off one of my lots, a little bit of land, so that I get, so if I want to build a 40-foot house, and I can only build a 30, and I don't have to change the whole house design, I can move it over, I can get a 40-foot house and meet the sideline-
That's true.
You are on the grid.
Yeah, then you're going to meet the side yard setback.
And I'm giving up one foot of ground on the other side.
That's correct.
But, but what happens, and the one house may be a little bit bigger because of this, but the other house would just have to be a little bit smaller because of this.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, most practical applications of this wouldn't do too much of that, or they invalidate their other lot, which is a negative.
Well, and that's right. You've got market conditions and all that.
Yeah.
You know, it's worth so much for a house, they're not going to make a lot that you can't get a house that meets, you know what I mean? So-
And is that, the individual that has the problem right now, is that what, is that part of the way, she's, is that what caused her problem? She wants to do an addition to her home?
Yeah. She's, no, she's actually rebuilding her house, an architect is doing it for her, and he said, you know, it would work a little better if we have about five feet more on the side of her house.
So, we're going to get a better-looking home in our neighborhood, we're going to-
I haven't reviewed that. I mean, this is an unfortunate case, because she, when I took over, and it, just a little background on it, she'd already gone through all that, spent a lot of money on surveys to meet our replating. Unfortunately, she wasn't told that it didn't meet the code. So, you know, I felt, one reason I'm before you is I felt obligated to see what I could do. And after I looked at more of this, I said, you know, this is a problem that could occur anywhere in the city. It's just not hers. If it was some single thing, I wouldn't be doing this, but it's something that could occur with other properties in the city, so.
And my, my only reservation is still there, is I, I'm trying to figure a way that this could be a negative to, we may be triggering some other unintended consequences by doing this, and I just wanted us to think about it.
Well, the only other way, if you want to do, I mean, one way you could do it, you could, you could say that we would allow up to 10 feet or five feet, you could, you could limit how much could be done on a change of lot without, you know, you would have those requirements we have in the average lot size, but you said, exceptions would be anything less than five, I mean, have to rewrite it, but anything less than so many feet.
It was, they're painting it all with-
Yeah.
Yeah, we're painting it all with one brush for every community that we have in our city, and it may be appropriate here, but not here, and that's kind of where I'm going from.
Well, I just don't think, you've got a lot of record here, they got to build a house on it. They got a right to build a house.
Surely.
It's pretty tough, it's pretty tough to use this.
I have a little confusion, I don't know if you guys did, but the lot was decreased from 93.55 square feet, but the average lot in that area is 20,000.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. See, see, one of the things is, yeah, they're big lots all over the place, but they've already got a lot of record that's a smaller.
Smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we do an overlay for that area?
No, I'm not doing an overlay for that area.
But it still meets the minimum.
You know, it's, wait, the minimum's 7,500 square feet. So, they're both over, yeah, I would never-
It still meets the minimum.
Yeah, you can't go below the minimum.
If you can't, as long as you meet the minimum, you're not in any violation, because the developer could have set these all kinds of ways initially, and now we have one bigger house.
See, the average size and all that, remember, when you do that, a lot of times, the minimum, like, if you're making new lots, are going to be above the minimum, because of what the existing lots are.
Now, you get to a minimum. Some are bigger, some are small.
But in this case, you can't, you can't get any lower than what's allowed in that. You can't create a lot that's not conformal.
So, you know, the economic situation would literally fall on the property owner.
Yep.
My only concern is, what does it do to the rest of the community, you know?
Well, I don't think you-
That's literally where I'm coming from.
Well, this person has to control two lots, Tim, too, where he couldn't do it, okay?
No, but I mean, you could have two adjacent property owners that were willing to do this, as long as they don't create a problem. I mean, you couldn't move the lot over, but see, she's, the one lot is vacant still. Okay, so she's dealing with, she's got a house on one and that, on that. But you could have property owners that want to move a lot line, and they wouldn't be able to move a lot line just for whatever reason they wanted to, because they don't meet the average width and size, because that lot line-
That's a negative.
See, that's a negative.
You and me, too, if we want to do it.
You see what I'm saying? I don't think it's a major issue at all. And, you know, I'll look at it more closely, but I wouldn't be recommending it if I thought it was. But then again, you could say, "Tim, you recommended it before," and-
Yeah, yeah.
No, I didn't say that. Well, I actually used this one time. A neighbor and myself, when I lived in Northern Virginia, we had acre and a half lots, and the gentleman wanted to commit his lot from the back, and I said, "Well, he wanted 10 feet of mine, or 12 feet, whatever it was at the time, to get an entrance from that side." And I said, "Fine, you can